I call a meeting to order. Right to? All right, and welcome, everybody, and certainly welcome our friends from the Community Services Board. I know we've got a pretty full agenda here to try to work through to get some information out on the table. We're glad to hear all of that. We really are here to refresh ourselves on all of the good work, the God's work that you do here for our community. Reverend Kenny Bryant could open with a prayer, or you can just jump in. You could, as Ken can, begin the agenda. I'm going to toss it to him if he makes any additions.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor Frame and council members, for allowing us to present to you our organization. It is our understanding that the city manager is proposing to assimilate the functions and operations and staff of Norfolk Community Services Board in with the city's governance, and have the NCSB as a department of the city, at least that's the recommendation that I heard at a meeting not too long ago. So we asked ourselves, as an organization, if you're going to inherit this system of health care to one of Norfolk's most needy and vulnerable groups, what do you need to know? And yes, I said health care. Services to those diagnosed with mental health and intellectual disability needs are quickly being integrated into a uniformed system of care where community services must include primary health care. Just in today's paper, an editorial spoke of the state's aggressive pursuit to shut down four of every five state health institutions, including behavioral health centers, and integrating them into the local community. In the next few months, we will not only be providing behavioral health care and primary care, we will be providing this care as mandated by the state into our Norfolk community neighborhoods. This presentation is geared to be educational. It will be content-heavy. However, after attending the city council meeting just a few weeks ago, where the city manager made his presentation, it became pretty clear to me and the rest of the Community Service Board family that there's a lot of information that you do not know, yet you will need to know, if you oversee this organization. This is no slight on the presentation or certain comments that were made. Like any health care system, the information is enormous and it is complex. It is understandable that not all the facts are known at such an early state of discussion. However, we hope that this presentation will help you understand more clearly the overall responsibility and function and activity of the organizations. And then afterwards, after the presentation, if you have any questions, that's a good time to field those questions from you. So I'm going to turn this over to Charles Ray, who is the interim executive director of the organization. Charles?
Thank you, Kenny. Mr. Mayor, the council people, guests, I am delighted to be here. I have a personal attachment with Norfolk. My parents married here in 1943. My father was being trained to serve as a corpsman in the U.S. Marine Corps. While he fought at Pellul and Okinawa, my mother worked for the Norfolk and Southern Railroad. So this is always a place of nostalgia for my family. I think we want to begin with just an understanding that behavioral health care is essential to health care, that treatment is effective, and that people make recovery. And based on the science and based on the emerging technologies we have, I'm going to share with you a few fast facts about what the Norfolk Community Services Board does. The NCSB provided services to over 7,303 Norfolk residents last year. We provide 24/7/365 emergency and crisis stabilization races. Six out of every 10 consumers who receive services, receive them as charity recipients. That's six out of 10. Only four come to us with any form of compensation. We've also been selected as a national demonstration project in two exciting fields: integrated medical primary care. We saw our first primary care patient last week, and we will be commenting more on that particular exciting program, one of only 20 funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Our crisis stabilization unit will be co-located, located at Centerra Norfolk General Hospital. It's the only one in Virginia to be so co-located. Intellectual disabilities are going to be a key focus for Virginia and the state over the next 10 years. The Department of Justice reached a settlement with the state about a week and a half ago, and more details of that will be provided. As we move into national health transition, electronic health records, the coordination of information, and the coordination of finance and payment mechanisms are going to be central and key. We are scheduled to go live with our electronic health record by July 1st of this year. Approximately $1.8 million in capital has already been used for this system, and $450,000 of computer upgrades to modernize the IT to meet our health system requirements. To underscore that we are a health care organization, we provided over 30,000 prescriptions for care in 2011. We've also been good stewards of public money. We've done reductions in workforce, rightsizing of operations, and administration, and we've resulted in an indirect cost of 13 percent. So why are we making these changes, and what are we looking to occur by 2014, a mere two years away? First of all, more people will have insurance, roughly around 36 million people. There'll be an increased demand for all levels of health care, but particularly in behavioral health care. One in five Americans at any point in time would require assistance and help in that area. Medicaid, which is currently funding a large portion of services, will become a health insurance benefit payment, and that should rise to about 133 of the federal, percent of the federal poverty level, and this will add enormous demand within our area. As has been mentioned, a focus on primary care and the coordination of all specialty care, including psychiatry and substance use. We'll be looking at a major emphasis on home and community-based services, and less reliance on high-cost institutional care. I mentioned the Department of Justice settlement with Virginia. We're also going to be looking at increased prevention, wellness, and disease management for those 5 percent of Medicaid patients who consume 20 percent of Medicaid dollars. And all finances will shift from being units for service to being risk-based, based upon performance outcomes, value-rated criteria, and to participate in accountable care organizations. So the day of the standalone, the day of the independent practitioner who is not networked is coming to a transition phase. Now, those are the fast facts in a quick glance of what is coming for us in health care. I'd like to ask our chief medical officer, Dr. Forte, to come up and take us from there.
Good afternoon, Mayor Frame, members of council, Mr. Jones. Today, I'm going to provide an overview of the Medical Services Division of the agency. We'll start things off by talking about the primary responsibilities of the Medical Services Division. First and foremost, we provide all of the physician nursing and pharmacy services to the different programs of the agency. We also help with the development, implementation, and monitoring of policies and practices to ensure that they conform to all of the federal and state regulations involving those things, for example, Board of Medicine, Board of Pharmacy regulations. We also ensure that all the medical staff, the nurses, and the doctors, and the physicians, are maintaining their practice within acceptable standards of care. A large component of the Medical Services Division is focused on medications, both the procurement, storage, dispensing, and delivery of medicines, and also the assigning of prescriptions to patients. We also participate in quality improvement, consultation both in-house and outside to our external stakeholders and agencies, and we also participate in service development and strategic planning. This is a brief overview of the medical staffing at the agency. We currently have 21 physicians, six of which are full-time psychiatrists, and we also have one full-time internist, who'll meet in a few minutes. We also have a number of permanent part-time and casual part-time doctors, especially the casual part-time component are the ones who back up our 24/7 services, like crisis stabilization unit and inpatient unit. We also employ 25 nurses, most of those being registered nurses, who play important roles in all of our medical programs, to include our crisis stabilization unit, as well as our integrated medical services unit. And we also have two part-time pharmacists, who help us work through all the myriad of pharmacy issues that we have on a day-to-day basis at the agency. We do run a limited services pharmacy at our opioid treatment program. That's a pharmacy that's not open to the general public, but does oversee our opioid treatment services, which are primarily methadone and buprenorphine. We also have three controlled substances registration medication rooms that are monitored by the Board of Pharmacy, which are required when medications are delivered to the CSB for eventual delivery and disposal to patients. Our pharmacists oversee the procurement, storage, and dispensing of methadone and buprenorphine, which is a highly regulated process involving DEA as well as the state codes. And normally during the course of a year, we usually go through at least two or three separate inspections for those two medications. Our pharmacists also had a great deal of effort in providing medications to our patients. As Charles said, many of our patients do not have insurance, and we have to utilize patient assistance programs, sample medications, and other ways of procuring medications for those individuals. Those medicines have to be packaged, stored, and delivered by the nurses, and the pharmacists help us do that. And we also, of course, the pharmacists provide consultation education to the physicians and the nurses at the agency. As we touched on earlier, we serve a great number of people, and the doctors across the agency prescribe, on average, about 30,000 separate medication orders per year. We also get some funding from the state, and each year, we purchase medications and provide those medicines to individuals who, again, primarily do not have insurance. And that, last year, totaled about $567,000, and we're on track this year to do just about that as well. For uninsured individuals, we also access medications from pharmaceutical company patient assistance programs. Those medicines have to be stored, packaged, and dispensed. Our pharmacists do help us with that. The cumulative value of those medicines are about $135,000 last year. And we also provide a great deal of sample medicines to patients, and the cumulative value of those medicines are about $150,000 a year. So outside of the prescriptions that we prescribe for people who have insurance, we spend almost about $900,000 on medications each year. We also have CLIA certifications, which are certifications required so that doctors and nurses can perform certain special laboratory tests in office environments. That's regulated by the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. We will have a full-service laboratory in our integrated medical clinic. We also have memorandums of understanding with area nursing schools. We bring in nursing students and help integrate them into psychiatric treatment, and that also serves as a potential area of recruitment for us. And we also have a MOU with the United States Navy to bring in second-year psychiatric residents, physicians, and community psychiatry. So all of our doctors, nurses, and pharmacists are dispersed out amongst the agency in various programs. Those programs include the opioid treatment program, the buprenorphine clinic, our pediatric mental health clinic with our child psychiatrists, our program of assertive community treatment, which you'll hear a little bit about in a few minutes, our inpatient unit at Norfolk General, our crisis stabilization unit, and first and foremost, our integrated medical services clinic, which is now being developed, in part through the medical direction of our new internist, Dr. Susan Girwa. And so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Dr. Girwa.
Mayor Frame, council members, Mr. Jones, it's a real honor to be able to present and to introduce this initiative of integration of primary care and behavioral health, which is starting in Norfolk. So bear with me over the next couple slides as we start focused on this grant, a federal grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration, but then I'll expand up to give some of the insight that Norfolk Community Services Board has had in initiating this, initiated several years ago with a foresight, but then what also can be considerations for the city of Norfolk as we go forward together. So the federal grant from SAMSA is what we would consider as seed money, almost $2 million over four years, but the total budget is over $3 million, almost three and a half. Now, that co-funding is in kind, it's from the NCSB, but is also from some expected revenue through the services provided. The program purpose is to improve the health status and save lives of people with severe mental illness. Now, understand that evidence has shown that people with severe mental illness live approximately 25 years younger than age-matched individuals in the general population. So we are in the business of saving lives. The population focus for this clinic and the focus of this grant is people with severe mental illness, seeing the psychiatrist at the CSB today, who have co-occurring chronic illnesses, diabetes, hypertension, hypercholesteremia, the usual ones that are seen in the general population, but certainly of very high prevalence in this population. The primary care services that we will be providing include prevention, screening, these are evidence-based interventions. We will have aggressive treatment of the chronic conditions, and a very aggressive but innovative approach to wellness, because we do believe that there may be some specific approaches to this population. So the expected results, as presented in the grant, are that over the four years, we will have seen 2,230 consumers who are being seen and receive services through the integrated clinic. We are held to very specific health, evidence-based health outcomes that are recognized nationally, and we are held also to some functional outcomes that are the national outcomes measures. This would be a daunting and impossible task if it were not for some partnerships that we are developing with EVMS, with Bon Secours, with Centerra, and ODU. We have also possibilities to move with Norfolk State and other CSBs in the region. Education opportunities mentioned for the CSB in general by Dr. Forte, residency opportunities, and student preceptorships are clearly within the scope of what we plan to do with this project. And we do expect this to generate some evidence to inform policy both at the state level and nationally. So this actually was a project written in 2008. It has come to fruition in 2011 for a number of reasons, but it is probably good that it is now, because we are ready, the community is ready, and in fact, at the national health level also seems ready, and this timeline, four years, will transition us into what we're hoping to achieve nationally in 2014. We are on the front line of this integration, integration of primary care and behavioral health transition. We are being watched nationally, we are being documented, we are feeding the evidence nationally, and indeed, we are positioning ourselves to be an accountable care organization. And so considerations for you, the city of Norfolk, this is an intervention process which is supposed to increase access for those who have no access to basic primary care and prevention and wellness programs. It will contribute to reducing some disparities in access to primary health care for those who have serious mental illness and those who don't. We are a major health stakeholder in the health care arena in the region, and this will forward that. And then we are certainly contributing this data, and Norfolk is, like I said earlier, on the national map for moving forward and showing the way on this pilot integration exercise. Thank you.
I'm Jackie Shady. I'm one of the clinical directors with the Community Services Board, and thank you for having us today. I'm going to quickly go through some of our services. We've got a lot of folks, and we want to get to as many of our services as possible. Clinical Acute Division has over 100 employees to provide services. They consist of psychiatrists, physicians, pharmacists, nurses, other qualified mental health and substance abuse professionals, and support staff. Programs I'm going to talk about fall into several categories. There's the substance abuse programs that we offer, forensics, reinvestment, case management, emergency services, and crisis stabilization. First program I'd like to mention is the opioid treatment program. You heard from Dr. Forte a little bit about that program. Our goal there is to reduce the physical and psychological and the social problems associated with opiate dependence and other drugs. As Dr. Forte mentioned, we primarily use methadone, but we also have buprenorphine. We serve over 300 consumers every day at that clinic. The clinic's open seven days a week, including the holidays, and one of our outcomes that we're very proud of, 90 percent of the clients in treatment for one year had opiate-free drug screens. Our program target is 80 percent. As you can see, we exceeded that, and the national average is 60 percent. So you can see, we far exceeded that. We also have a vast majority of other programs under the Substance Abuse Division, including case management. We have case management for adults, but we also specialize in women's case management services. This is linking, monitoring, referring, getting folks who are using substances linked with other community partners, including medical services for physical issues as well. Women's case management services are really tailored, as we say, for women. They include all kinds of educational programs. We emphasize domestic violence, boundaries, parenting, all kinds of things like that. We also case manage folks in what's known as shelter plus care, which we also have a program that we have a case manager doing outreach for the TANF Services, which is temporary assistance for needy families. We also are the folks that when hospitals may have a baby that tests positive for drugs or alcohol, we're the liaison that's called, so we can go to the hospital, we make presentations and do in-services for the hospitals, but they call us out to then intervene with that mother and see what we can do to assist. We also have residential and detoxification services. Residential services are usually 28 days, and we have contracts with providers across the state for those. And detoxification services, some of which we provide in our crisis stab unit, and others we contract for also. Those stays are usually anywhere from three to five to 10 days. We also partner with Hampton Newport New CSB with the Southeastern Family Project. That's where we work with women who are abusing substances while pregnant, or women who have given birth to children while abusing substances, and we have some residential and specialized services for those folks. Under forensics, one of the programs we wanted to mention was the Norfolk Mental Health Court. It started in 2004, and it's the very first specialized docket in Virginia to serve folks with mental illness. Our capacity serves 34, and they must have been charged with a felony. We also provide services called not guilty by reason of insanity. These are folks who have been found not guilty by reason of insanity by Virginia criminal courts, and they require special attention for not only their legal needs, but also their mental health or substance-abusing needs.
You have, let me ask you this, how can you increase the capacity in mental health court?
We would need to look at staffing ratios and things like that. We currently partner with community partners also to do that, but right now, we have one case manager providing those services.
What's your waiting list? Do you have one?
No, sir, not right now.
How do we know that people are available to be able to get in? Because usually what happens is, is you have somebody that you want to get in mental health court, and it comes back that it's full. We really don't know, I guess the PSR would let us know if there's an opening?
Yes, so we have the folks working in the courts every day, and with the other courts, not just the specialty court, but with the other judges in that area. And we also provide in-services, so some of those folks can be linked to other services. But you're right, mental health court, at this point, with the one case manager, is a limited service. We also provide restoration services. These are folks primarily that need education, so they can participate in their defense, but often they also need medication. And so if it's education, we have a staff member that goes into the jail, provides those restoration services in the jail, so that this person won't have to be transported out of the jail to a state facility and then brought back. When medications are necessary, of course, we have to look at other alternatives like inpatient hospitalization. We also have jail diversion, which is a post-booking mental health and co-occurring jail diversion service. We serve 20 new defendants per year in that program. We also have the Norfolk Drug Court under the leadership of Judge Fulton. It's a state-funded program that began in 1998. It provides comprehensive substance abuse treatment services for 12 to 18 months for up to 50 clients. There's leveling systems as people progress through treatment. It's very cost-effective. It costs approximately $2,500 to $4,000 per client while incarcerated, and it costs $2,500 to $4,000 for us to serve them in drug court, while the incarcerated client is $20,000 to $50,000 per year. And we have served 560 clients since we began that program. We also have the Norfolk Circuit Court re-entry docket. This is also with Judge Fulton, and it's a federally funded program with Second Chance Act, and it's the first of its kind in Virginia, and we're providing services for up to 40 clients. We also have a division called reinvestment or census management. One of our state facilities, Eastern State, had a downsizing, and we closed beds at that state facility. The funds that were saved from staffing patterns, beds, and things like that while shutting some of those beds was reinvested back into the community, the nine Community Services Boards served by Eastern State. We have a contractual agreement with those nine CSBs and private psychiatric hospitals, where we provide inpatient services for folks that would have normally gone to the state facility. Recovery is what we're all about here, and we prefer to serve our folks in their community so that their family and loved ones can also be part of the treatment process. We're a gatekeeper for consumers who do need long-term services at the state facilities. In 2011, the reinvestment team served over 460 consumers in several different facilities with an average length of inpatient hospital stay of 5.9 days. The reinvestment program is also tasked with the management of individuals who are admitted and discharged from Central State Hospital under criminal and civil commitments. Those not guilty by reason of insanity folks would fall into that category.
So could you go back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
So, gatekeeper for consumers who need long-term intermediate care.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but it says that the average length of stay is 5.9 days?
Correct. Those are folks that we're treating here in the community. If they need longer term, then we come together once a week as a region, and we discuss clinical cases, and we look at those folks that would be better served at our Eastern State facility for the intermediate care.
So what percentage of those 460 would you say go to Eastern State?
From Norfolk, I would say it's less than 5 percent.
So out of that 460, only 5 percent of those?
Yes, ma'am. The reinvestment program, as I mentioned, also with Central State Hospital. It's a little bit different process than Eastern State because of the legal criteria that's associated with that. One of our state mandated programs is emergency services. Some folks in here know those folks as prescreeners, or community mental health, or crisis counselors. We're mandated by Virginia statute. We pre-admission, we pre-admission screen folks that are in need of state facilities, but we're also the folks that when somebody needs to be in a inpatient psychiatric setting, and either due to their illness, does not know they need to be there, or are refusing, we do a clinical evaluation, seek assistance from our magistrate, a legal order is issued, and these folks are temporarily detained in patient care. While in that care, a CSB liaison monitors that care, attends every commitment hearing, and at the commitment hearing is offering the commitment judge or the special justice other community alternatives other than hospitalization. We're mandated to provide services in the least restrictive alternative possible, and according to clients' wishes when appropriate. And so we follow those folks throughout that entire process.
So, you know, I'm aware of the lack of space for these types of emergency situations. What percentage do you think of people that would benefit from an inpatient intervention are not able to be cared for? are not able to be cared for?
Well, it's difficult to come up with a percentage because when we cannot find a, what we might call, an inpatient bed, there are other alternatives, one of which you're going to hear at the end of this presentation, crisis stabilization units are the state's answer to some of those folks. It seemed that you were either outpatient or inpatient with nothing in between, and so crisis stabilization units have been established.
How often are people turned away because they don't have beds though?
We struggle monthly with maybe two or three cases, but we usually place those cases either in an inpatient setting of lesser criteria. Sometimes we may treat folks while they're in an emergency room.
Right.
We get emergency appointments with their physician if they're active with us, and so something is done at that time.
Jackie, can I just, you mentioned that you do some cooperative work with Newport News in Hampton?
Yes, sir.
On the Southeastern Family Project. Do we have any cooperative agreements with any other C S Bs in the region that we work with?
Yes, sir, we do, especially with regard to the reinvestment project. We do serve each other's clients in our programs. And clients with Medicaid have what we call consumer choice. So you can live in another city and then seek mental health services.
Does that happen to us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the crisis stabilization units frequently serve each other's clients. At the end of the stay, they are being followed by their own city case management, and then they are brought in upon discharge to link them back to their own city services.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie.
Sure. And emergency services took over 50,000 calls last year. We're a 24/7 program, saw almost 3,000 people face to face here in the city. 894 of those were pre-screenings, meaning they resulted in hospitalization. 2,000 were crisis interventions where we provided crisis intervention, crisis counseling, a least restrictive alternative. And we are also contracted with Centerra Norfolk General, and we provide intervention services in their ER, and we performed over 16,000 evaluations there. And as I mentioned, one of the alternatives to folks other than inpatient care is one of our crisis stabilization units, and Dr. Jacob Berman's going to talk with you about that.
I have a question about one of your statistics. You said that your care level was at 90%. Your success rate was at 90%.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you attribute that to? The state level is at 60, and averages, I think it was 80. What do you attribute, what are you doing differently?
I believe it's the integrated and collaborative working relationships. These clients aren't just treated or consumers, patients, at the methadone clinic. They are referred to all of the services throughout our community services board, so they have access to psychiatric care, medical care, and case management. And our methadone program also has a leveling system where folks progress. We also are very client-focused, so we have a consumer group where they come together once or twice a month and share their concerns and offer their opinions. And we also use a lot of folks who have recovered through the program to come back and let folks know it's possible.
So you have a hold of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Frame, Mr. Jones, members of council, thank you for hearing us today and being willing to listen to Crisis Stabilization. It's a privilege to talk to you today about crisis stabilization. My slide is pretty self-explanatory. I'll read the first bullet point. Crisis stabilization program provides medically necessary mental health and detoxification services on a short-term basis for non-hospitalized individuals experiencing an acute crisis due to a mental illness or substance use disorder. A little history on crisis stabilization programs. In 2005, there were only two crisis stabilization programs in the state. Today, there are approximately 40 crisis stabilization programs in the state with different capabilities and different philosophies. The rapid growth of crisis stabilization programs statewide and indeed nationwide is in response to a growing need that was identified by physicians as well as ER personnel and in Virginia by our state mental health commissioner, who tasked the communities with coming up with an alternative for what was happening in the emergency rooms. The issue was that there was a growing gap as inpatient psychiatric care became more expensive. There was a growing gap between those people who were fine in the community and could see their doctors on an outpatient basis and those who needed acute care psychiatric hospitalization. There were a large percentage of people in the middle who were in emergency rooms and staying for very long periods of time in emergency rooms, who the ER docs, as well as emergency services personnel, felt were too sick to go home and perhaps dangerous to go home, and we came up with crisis stabilization programs as an answer to that problem.
What would be an example of a situation where someone would end up in your program?
If someone's depressed, maybe there's a marital dispute, maybe there's drug use involved, and they are in the emergency room, and they're quite depressed. But the emergency room personnel feel that they would be equally well-served in a less expensive alternative, like a crisis program. They could very well come to crisis stabilization. If they didn't need extremely close monitoring, they could come to my program.
Currently, within Norfolk General Hospital, they do have a mental health ward at, I forget, the sixth floor or whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
Eighth floor. Eighth floor. It was the old proverbial ninth floor, as it was, but it's the eighth floor. And my understanding is, in having clients who, they could be threatening suicide, they could be having substance abuse issues that in turn deal with depression and suicide, that now they are sent upstairs. Is that a voluntary commitment that they go upstairs to that floor at this point before? Because that's in, tell me what the difference is? Because if there's already that service there, what's yours, what's the difference that you're going to provide?
The difference is we provide a less expensive and less intensive alternative. Some folks are so either self-destructive or so homicidal that they need direct line-of-sight observations.
That's the eighth floor, basically.
Or they might need restraints.
Right.
We're not licensed. My unit is licensed as a subacute program, so we don't have the capacity to provide that level of intervention. But that's a good question, because that's the gap. The people that are most severely ill end up on the eighth floor.
Right.
And everybody else who you really might not want to send home, because we want to intervene early, we don't want them to become more ill. We don't want them to have to go to the eighth floor.
And usually that is, as people understand, that is an extremely secure facility.
Yes.
On that floor. So tell me, if we were to put it co-located at Norfolk General, and I know I'm taking your time up, but what kind of, the individuals there would not be harmed to others, and therefore, the security is really a non-issue, I take it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
The level of security, if you were to co-locate it at Norfolk General, the level of security that would be needed for the person that is not as, let's say, destructive as somebody that ends up on the eighth floor, what type of security do you plan in place at Norfolk General for those? Because I'm sure there's going to be issues that may come up in the neighborhood.
No, it's a great question. And in fact, there was a recent meeting between the safety and security personnel at Norfolk General and the C S B personnel.
I take it that they're not injurious to others, and therefore, the security issue is like any other patient? And is that what we're talking about, because it's such a step down?
Usually, they're not as severely dangerous to other people, but perhaps they're having homicidal thoughts or suicidal thoughts, but they're voluntary, they're willing to get help, and we judge that they're not an imminent threat to anyone else or to themselves. And so the security needs are much lower on my unit. Sometimes someone gets sicker on my unit, and they need to be stepped up to a higher level of care. That's why there's an advantage to co-locating in Norfolk General. There's more rapid access to both the emergency room, so people can move out of the emergency room quickly, but there's also the ability on my unit, if someone becomes more ill, to move them to the more acute unit. And for folks that are in the acute unit, as they become better, but maybe they're not quite ready to go home yet, they need some more time for medications, tweak the medications, they need some more time to get some wraparound services, to get the discharge planning well enough so that we decrease the likelihood that they'll come back to the hospital, they can step down to the crisis stabilization program and receive services there for a few more days before they go home. There's tremendous advantages to locating in Norfolk General, and also because Norfolk General is our main referral source, we get, probably the majority of our patients get referred out of the Norfolk General Hospital emergency room to my program. I said that wrong. A large portion of the folks that come to me comes from Norfolk General Hospital emergency room.
I'm assuming there is a cost to moving this there. Where is the funding coming from to be able to do, to co-locate with them to do this?
Funding for the move to Norfolk General is being worked on between the Norfolk C S B and Centerra Norfolk General.
Doctor, I can speak to that as well. My name is Mark Moser. I'm a CFO. Currently, Centerra is working on an agreement with us where their lease would afford the C S B a good amount of capital funding, enough to cover the bill. And then, of course, there would be some other capital that the C S B would have to fund. Currently, we have earmarked right around $300,000 to $500,000, as I estimate, in additional capital, but that's based on reserves that we already have at the C S B. We would not have to go out to market and get those funds. Thank you, man. The bulk of it comes from actual Centerra themselves. Thank you.
So $500,000 is what it's costing?
I was going to ask a question. You know, a few years back, we had a situation within the city as pertains to folk with some psychiatric issues. And as a result of that, they were picked up by the police, police not knowing the severity of the mental state of the individual. Some of these individuals were taken to jail. How does that, how does this play into that? I mean, you have folk that are in jail with some psychiatric issues. Is there a pipeline with the sheriff's department to identify? Am I getting ahead of myself?
No, sir.
No, that's a great question. Great question. And Jackie, would you just mind to stand up and just respond about our emergency services?
Yes, sir. We have very good relationships with our public safety. As a matter of fact, we're written into the police department's general order. They accompany us on what we call unstructured calls because we are mobile, unlike some of the other cities where folks are brought to them in crisis. We go to them, and so the police accompany us, we train the academy and so forth. Likewise with the jail, if somebody's brought, well, first of all, we hope through sequential intercept and so forth that the police will call us first. They do know to call us. A large majority of the police screeners get calls directly from the police out on the scene before they do anything with those folks. If they do go to jail, we have a couple of folks who are in contact with folks inside the jail, the deputies through booking, but then also the social workers and so forth through the medical division of the jail, and we go into the jail and assess and see what we can do with those there, too.
Thank you, Jackie. Dr. Berman?
I just wanted to say a few more things about crisis stabilization. We take all kinds of patients with a wide assortment of different serious psychiatric and medical illnesses. As I said before, they may be suicidal or homicidal. They may have difficulty controlling their anger, their depression or anxiety, and it may be too risky to be sent home from the emergency room. We provide detoxification services for those people that struggle with alcohol addiction, opioid addiction, heroin, even folks that are very, very depressed coming off of cocaine. We provide services for all those folks. We have a full range of laboratory testing available. Dr. Forte mentioned board of pharmacy, approved medication room at the crisis stabilization we have one. All the patients that enter my program receive a clinical assessment by a counselor, a complete nursing assessment, a complete psychiatric evaluation, and a medical history and physical within 24 hours of arrival. We have approximately, and we have an average of seven-day stay at our facility. Our move to crisis, our move to Centerra is scheduled for the summer of 2012. We will be the first crisis stabilization program in the state to be co-located in a hospital. We talked a little bit about the advantages before, about stepping people up, stepping people down, and better communication and access with the emergency room. But moving to Norfolk General, as well as Dr. Forte's integrated healthcare program, really puts the Norfolk Community Services Board on the cutting edge and really at the forefront of the develop, of the delivery of mental health care. I'm not sure everybody is aware of how significant some of this stuff is. It's a very, very exciting process, and we should all be very proud of it. The collaboration between the Norfolk C S B and Centerra is a true public-private partnership. I'm very proud of our program, obviously. We take admissions around the clock. Not all crisis stabilization programs in the state do. We have round-the-clock RNs. Not all crisis stabilization programs do, which that's why they limit and they can't take admissions around the clock. We take patients with both not only psychiatric conditions, but also serious medical conditions, asthma, diabetes, hypertension. We have a full-time medical director. We have three licensed counselors, a peer counselor, behavioral aides, and I have a core group of RNs that will stack up against anybody.
Excuse me. You said diabetes.
Hypertension, asthma, all different kinds of medical conditions end up also having psychiatric conditions. They might be depressed because of their medical.
How about sickle cell? You don't take sickle cell?
We recently had someone with sickle trait. I'm not aware of anyone being referred recently that had sickle cell disease.
But you do, because you know, people with sickle cell, I mean, he's smart. But people with sickle cell, I know that they do self-medicate. They get depressed and they begin to self-medicate. A lot of times, people over-medicate, and I know some people that have lost their life due to that. And so in terms of having a crisis hotline or being able to see folk with sickle cell, I don't know if that information is out there, that you do accept folk with diabetes, hypertension. But sickle cell is something that, as you well know, that affects the African-American community. And I've seen, you know, in certain communities, I've seen quite a few people not lose their life to the illness itself, but to, again, overdosing on pain medicine. So it would be helpful that, you know, in your information that.
Did you get that information?
Right, that people knew that.
Sure, a lot of people don't know all the different things we do.
Right.
We provide after-hour consultations, weekend and holiday treatment. We're available around the clock. I wanted to just thank you for allowing me to present. I welcome any one of you or all of you to come by afterwards if you want my cellphone number. I'm happy to give you my cellphone number. You can call anytime. It'd be my privilege to take you on a tour of our program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What floor are you looking to go in Norfolk General?
Seven.
Seven?
We'll be co-located there with emergency services also.
Seven on the old side.
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Capaldo, Developmental Service Director for the agency. I'm going to go through some of the other clinical departments that we have. I'm going to try and go through them kind of quickly. Got a slide for about each of them. Intellectual disability case management, formerly mental retardation case management. We served about 457 people last year. 300 of them or so have Medicaid waiver. Medicaid waiver is the funding source that allows you to live in a group home, give vocational services, environmental modifications. As you see, we have a large waiting list for that service, not for case management, but for actually getting the waiver. Department of Justice is going to help us with that, especially with the folks coming out of the training centers. They will provide Medicaid waiver services and funding. That does not help the community waitlist, so we're going to need to move that along and try and advocate to get some more community slots for that. I do have some contracts with some private providers as well for some services. Waiver group homes, new to us. We got two of them coming up, should be open in March. This was the downsizing project at Southeastern Virginia Training Center. We were able to get some funds through Department of General Services. They rehabbed two homes for us, furnished them, and we're going to be serving 10 people, five in each. And we've had some problems with ADA compliance versus licensure. They had to widen an extra door and stuff, some minor stuff. We'll be getting that together. But they have generators, have sprinklers, they're the excellent homes.
Real quickly, too, I just want to thank Tim. When this first came out, there were a lot of very nasty and bad rumors going on in the community of Bayview about what type of people would be living there. Tim came out, spoke to the Civic League, and then we addressed, I think we pretty much addressed all the individual concerns. I think there's still some people who... think there's still some people who believe at one point there were child molesters going to be in these homes. And it's unfortunate that that got out. We even had some PTA people contacting. But Tim did a great job handling that and helping get the, the right information out. So thank you for doing that.
Well, we appreciate your assistance. That helped us out a lot as well, and just getting the word out of what a good program really is. Those houses are beautiful, and you'll all be invited to our opening when we have it. Infant toddler connection, one of the agency's favorite programs with kids, birth, birth to three years old. Current census, about 273 people. We served about 700 kids last year. The big statistic I'd like to get from this is you see the 46% of children who go through our program do not need further services. That means they're not going into special ed into the school system. You know, they're getting that service early and they're, they're going on and living normal, productive lives, which is, of course, our goal. The VICAP, Virginia Medical Clinical Assessment Program. This is new to us, beginning of fiscal year, started July 18th. It's mandated from DMAS. Every CSB had to do this service. Licensed counselors provide an independent assessment for the three services you see there: intensive in-home, therapeutic day treatment, and mental health supports. They do an individual clinical assessment, make a recommendation to KEYPRO, which is the funding source, and then the individual has a choice of service that they want in the private sector. Currently, we do not provide at CSB those three services, so it is a very independent assessment. Adult mental health intake and outpatient intake, you can imagine, that's, that's the way in, the gatekeeper. That's where you go to get services. Everyone who gets service here at our Community Service Board sees a licensed therapist for an evaluation prior to the direction of what service we would, we would put them into. Also have an outpatient clinic. See, it's about 235 people currently getting outpatient mental health services at Only Road. Pediatric mental health, this is just on the other side of the door from, from the adults. We have the same idea. We have intake, out, and outpatient. We have psychiatry, one of, Dr. Forte had mentioned, one of our psychiatrists, Dr. Minor is housed there. We have a licensed clinical psychologist and three licensed mental health professionals providing outpatient services to kids up to 21. A little bit more on the, under pediatric mental health, you have case management, SED case management. This is for kids back to 18 years old, linking and monitoring to services, following them in school and such. Intensive care coordination, we partner with the NIC office. This is where we have someone go and evaluate the kids who are placed through the NIC office in residential, just to make sure that they're getting the proper care. A lot of these kids are placed across the state, Danville, Northern Virginia. And we're just making sure they're getting the proper care that the city's paying for. A little more on that. We have, we have two staff at the Juvenile Attention Center. Got a licensed therapist there, case manager to help out, do some linking and monitoring. I've got liaison at the courts for juveniles. So she gets called in. If the judges have a question, then she can make that instant referral and help out at the court system. And then prevention program, we've got three people beating feet in schools and at the rec centers and such, giving essay education for kids. I'll continue on community support. This is for mental health case management. We have probably, I want to say about 600 folks, a little bit under 600 folks receiving mental health case management. This is for severe mentally ill folks. This is linking and monitoring, linking to the doc, you know, and linking to benefits, health, healthcare and such. Mental health supports, this is, usually goes in tandem with case management, where you will get some, get some extra services. This will help some budgeting skills, making sure some medication and everything is moving along with, with the care. The idea is to get you in, get you stable, and drop you back down to case management. Some more information. Path, Path Homeless Services. This, we have two, we have two, two staff that are helping out with this service, dealing with our housing first, trying to get the reduction in hospitalization and incarceration, linking to benefits for the folks who are homeless, working with the Homeless Consortium, working with Sarah H. Buller. So this is, this is a good program that does a lot for our, for sort of needy folks. There's a lot to pack it on that. Our PAC program is for our most, few patients. It's pretty much, if you want to think about it, it's intensive case management. We have a doctor embedded in that program who'll actually make home visits for our most needy and do med deliveries as long, as well as having a nurse do that. Case managers see these folks just about every day. And we serve about 120 people in that program. And that is very community-based. More on PAC. And Therapeutic Learning Center, this is, this program is, we're taking this down, and the idea is to, of course, get, get these folks to work on support employment and do some more community-based type stuff. So sorry I went through that fast, but after a time, I went through it. So.
Thank you.
Next up, Mark Moser, our CFO.
Mayor Prain, Councilman. Going to walk through finance very, very quick, because I'm kind of getting the, the time signal. It's going to be some very, from, very broad slides. First and foremost, the biggest problem, so to speak, with the finances of the CSB relate back to one common theme, and that, that is the recession. With the recession, we're seeing tremendous cuts in funding. As you can see by this slide here, over the, over the years, the CSB has managed to maintain roughly a revenue stream of about 25 million. This last year, the projection is to end this year 23 million eighty-eight, which is about a $1.5 million decrease. Those, that drop in revenue comes from a handful of things, primarily on the federal and the local level. Funding decreases, again, due to economic times. There's not enough money to go around. The other piece of the puzzle that relates back to the recession has to do with our charitable care. As, as Mr. Ray alluded to earlier, as the recession continues, we continue to see the numbers of the uninsured increase. We currently serve a, a good number of charitable care this year. The dollars that'll be associated with that charitable care will come in around 2.5 million. Last year, it peaked at just about $3 million. What that means financially, of course, is that's money that we didn't collect in, in fees from consumers. This is charitable care that we afforded to the community. The numbers of charitable care consumers through the last three years, the projection for, for this year, you can see right around the 3 million and, and year ending 63010 dipped in 2011, but we're finding that it's right back up for the projection of 2012. So what have we done to, to sort of right the ship, so to speak, in, in the middle of this recession? We've, we've really started to look at all of our costs, from administrative level down to the operating level, restructure business models, look at the way that we deliver services. And year over year, you can see that the curve, we've bent the cost curve for, for our healthcare delivery down considerably, notably this last year. Between fiscal year ending 63011 and 63012, we managed to bring our costs down by just over 1.7 million. How did we do that? Personnel decreases administratively and operations. We also reduced our operating costs, but more than anything, our service costs. And of course, part of the charitable care is, is reducing general relief. Year over year, indirect costs, one of the critical things in healthcare as we move into this new model in 2014 is to participate in Medicaid. You need to get your indirect admin cost to right around 15% in the year ending 63011. The CSB was right around 15.7. After doing some, some severe administrative cost cutting, we brought that number down to about 13.2. So we're well under this threshold that the federal, federal government's expecting to see as we move into 2014. Well positioned for that change. How did we do that? We collapsed the administrative management structure. We reduced administrative operating costs and services. So year over year, we reduced our indirect admin by about a million, just over a million. And again, reduced the overall rate from 15.7 to 13.2. And that's, that is very critical as we move into 2014. We will be monitored tremendously at the federal level for that number of grants, et cetera, funding. Of course, with these, with these deficits resulting from, you know, basically the dips in revenue, our, our net assets have been decreasing over, year over year by a considerable amount. And we project this year to end up at about a, about a 5.7, 5 million seven in, in total net assets. We do have some balance sheet issues. We've got some restricted cash that's still on the balance sheet for the MetLife issue. There's accrued.
What is that meant?
It is, it's an issue that back in 2011, there was a, there was a demutualization of MetLife, and the administration at that point did not, did not account for it properly. And it's, it's basically money that needs to be distributed down to the plan participants. We've got that money reserved on the balance sheet. We've worked through it with KPMG. They're aware of it. The state's aware of it. It's just, it's, it's just a matter of figuring out what that money's worth in, in today's dollars and funneling that down into the plan participants. So that money is reserved on the balance sheet. Total accrued and related taxes, we run an accrual of about 738,000 on, on the balance sheet currently. There's an accrued retirement plan distribution that is, that is made to MetLife annually of about 1.1. And our unrestricted net assets, given, given the deficits and the capital spending, we should be down to about just, just about a million at the end of this year, so.
What are those net assets? Is that cash or is it?
Net assets represents several things. Yeah, net assets represents all the assets that the company owns.
I understand.
Yeah, right, right, right. But reduced by any liabilities owed. It's, it's like owner's equity.
Well, how, how much of five, six, seven owners cash?
Of cash? You, right now, we have approximately 5 million. At the end of this year, we'll have about 5 million in cash. A good number of that is reserved.
Where does that come from?
Where does that come from? Oh, several revenue streams. We get the largest amount of our funding from the state through a block grant, through the performance contract. Probably about 66% of our revenue comes from there.
I understand. But is that from years gone by?
Correct.
We didn't spend the money that had, was given to us?
Correct.
And we accumulated it as?
Yes, sir.
Cash reserve?
Yes, sir.
So of the 5.6 billion, 5 million is cash. And that's what you, if you have a deficit or drawn against?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Are you required to have a certain percentage on, on reserve?
No, but there's, there's a guideline for nonprofits. And granted, we are, we're a pseudo-governmental agency. It's not a true, I won't say that we're a nonprofit, but the general rule of thumb is, is to have about three months operating, three months operating capital. And we have, we're, we're below that right now. But hopefully, with the, with the grants we've been going after, we've been very successful this year obtaining three grants, three grants. And we've got another one on the back burner that looks like it may come through, the SAMSA grant being one. SAMSA also agreed to help us pay for our electronic health record. They're providing us the money in an office of the justice grant that we just obtained. That has an additional stream of 250,000 and 225 in the following year if this grant works out. So we're hoping to, to get that reserve number back up, because it is kind of scary to operate.
If you don't spend what the grant is for, you can take it to reserve? Is that right?
Depends, depends. If it's unrestricted money, if it, if it comes as unrestricted, if, if there is money left over at the end of the day, the CSB can, can quote unquote, put that on their balance sheet as, as, as reserves. If it's restricted, if it's restricted by the federal government or by the state, we don't spend it. We do have to either spend it. If it's a state, we have to spend it in the following year. Or if it's federal, we have to give it back. Thank you.
Wait, you said the accrued retirement plan contribution of, I guess that's that 1.1 million? And that, and you said it's to MetLife?
Correct.
Are y'all under a different?
We're in a defined benefit plan.
Okay.
So it's, it's a contribution. It runs off of 10% of employee wages.
So, so that, that reserve, if you, you, you saw the grant, and you didn't get the number of folk to participate, well, number, you didn't have a certain number of people to come in, and so you didn't utilize those resources. They weren't federal dollars, so you didn't, where they were on restricted funds. And so this money goes into the reserve. Now, if you got a program that's struggling, what, what would you use that money first for? Administrative or for services directly related to individuals?
That's, that's a great question. What we do, and generally, that's what we've been doing for the last two and a half years. We taking reserves from past years, and that's what we're doing. We are subsidizing many of our programs. In fact, you know, if you were to look at a, a P and L, an operating statement, I'm sorry, for each individual unit, most of them operated at deficit. So the programs where we are seeing large deficits, they don't have dedicated funding, we quote-unquote subsidize them through, through reserves and, and excess state dollars. So, and, and that, that will continue until the, the funding starts to increase, which.
But that business plan makes you broke.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. The CSB is not a, currently not a viable model. It's currently not a viable.
Don't we, doesn't it have to be a viable model soon?
Yes, it does. Absolutely.
Independently or through the city?
Absolutely, it does. And that's, and that's what we've been doing this last year, is tailoring back the cost. Like I said before, we've cut 1.7 million dollars in costs, but you have to remember, we have three types of services. We have, we have mandated, which is legislated by the state. We have core.
You don't have to figure out, hey, you're not pulling out of reserves every, every year.
That's our, that's our mission. That is our mission, sir.
But it's not really set up to be a reserve.
I'm saying, if it goes away, then what do you, I mean, we've got, I don't know what, you can call it whatever you want.
Yeah, but it's.
But you got to operate your business, so you can't take out of your savings account every year.
I understand that.
Or else you're broke.
Right. But if you have, if you go out and get a grant, and you get enough people to come and fulfill that grant, then there's nothing there. And so, you know.
I understand that. I'm just saying, you've got to run it like a business, and you can't keep drawing out of reserves for so long. So you got to figure out how you're not going to draw out of reserves.
Yes, we understand that.
There's a difference in the way you run your business. They've got man, things that are mandated that they have to do.
I understand, but it's still, if you run out of money. I, I understand. It's a different situation.
Well, you just, well, you made one statement. I mean, I think you need to qualify it, because that, what they're trying to do is cover things that they don't.
I understand.
You know, presently funded.
Figure out how. Okay, what happens if it's not there, there's no reserve?
Well, I mean, that's what we hope doesn't happen someday. They're going to look to us.
I think it's a great question, but perhaps Bernard and Jack, at some point, considering the circumstances and where we're going to end up by June 30th, is there any way that we can be involved, meaning Marcus and the city, be involved with the financial aspects, whether it's money in, money out, between now and then? At least, what can you do? Or is any type of agreement you can come up with?
I don't know that there's an, an agreement necessary. I think if we need to see, we could come up with one. But I think the Community Service Board is happy to share financial information and, and work with us to the extent that we, that we want to.
Especially decision-making ideas between now and June, considering if we're, if they are coming in July 1. I mean, I think that there should be some involvement from City Hall.
I just think the critical piece of what they do is go out and get grants. And so if they, if, if a large, what is, what percentage of that, what percentage do you rely on in grants?
Right now, it's very small. It's very small. The CSB has historically depended on, on block grants, city funding, and, and fees. With the onset of the recession, of course, all of those big block grant contributors, that money is shrinking. And in addition to that, our consumers, you know, where they used to have insurance, you're talking 60% of our consumers now do not have insurance. So that's, that's a critical piece of our revenue stream. So that's, that's an interesting piece of the puzzle, is that we, we are obligated to serve people that do not have insurance. Can we go back to Andy's question? And Marcus, do you have a response to what Andy was saying?
I think it's very important. We, in the memo that I sent out Friday, I discussed that, I guess, over the course of the last week or so, we've had no less than three meetings, trying to get two transition teams from the city and the CSB, which we've blended into one, looking at everything from finances to our retirement. I, I think one of the things that we'll struggle with over the next, you know, several months is that the city's putting together a budget, and the CSB is putting together a budget. And I think it's important to, Councilman Protozero's point, is that there needs to be, in my opinion, some collaborative effort, because some of the decisions that will be, will be made by the CSB may be inherited by the city.
Needs to integrate.
And I think that we need to have some type of collaboration.
And some guidance from you.
Yeah.
I wasn't in some of the meetings, but I know that the city cut our budget last year, a million dollars, with no direction as to what services we should cut. So we, if we're going to have less money, then we've got to cut services, but we need some direction from y'all about, as to what. some direction from y'all about as to what services you'd like to see as well.
I would say in all fairness, with you not being in the room.
Yeah.
There was a plan that would have addressed that without you coming with the shortfall. So I think it's very important for us to have this integration sooner rather than later.
Do we need it in writing? Bernard?
It wouldn't, it would not hurt so that if we put it in writing, everybody will have a scorecard, know the numbers.
Is there a particular model that we're looking at?
Yes, in the long run, we would move over to the Administrative Policy Board, much like the other 10 single jurisdiction localities. And so ultimately, that's where we'd like to be.
All right.
It's just the months in between now and when that transition actually occurs.
I don't, I might have tried to criticize. I'm just trying, do we think it's going to get better? There going to be more insurance coverage? And the states and the federal government are going to give us more?
As you saw, we are diminishing it dramatically. Our overhead got rid of half of the fleet. So we have corrective measures in-house. The issue will be to manage the transition, if that's the council's will. And we are already well down the road on due diligence in transition.
I guess I'm just saying, I think that's the right way to go rather than think maybe next year the state or the federal government or somebody's going to give us more.
No, sir.
Because that's not been the trend, at least in the city.
And...
And I don't, I don't think we can depend on that.
My mission, my mission is to correct the financial and management structures and to work in collaboration with the city manager to ensure that there is no transition issues for our consumers, our staff, and the community we serve.
I realize it's perhaps in the future and perhaps still a little bit unclear, but do you have a sense with the healthcare legislation as it is passed now, what the impact would be, whether it's going to be positive or negative for your clients?
It will depend upon the essential benefit structure that is decided on, which this administration has now said states are going to be involved in that. So the state of Virginia has yet to promulgate any process as to what will be in this enhanced insurance plan. And that is, that is of concern because without knowing the benefit, I can't project what the revenue expenses and number served would be. What we do know is we're going to have more people, about 36 million more nationally, and they will have some form of core benefit.
More people that what?
Than we currently have.
That are covered.
Covered. That's correct. So you'll have more coverage, but we don't yet know what that benefit will look like. And that's of concern.
And that's because the state has now lied. It's difficult to outline when you're pursuing to get rid of it.
Yes. And, and deference, deference to the time, I'm going to suspend the remainder of our presentation and simply offer to meet with any group, anytime, anywhere. We did not cover our human resources, the human capital that make our programs effective and efficient. I could not talk to you about compliance. And healthcare compliance is an enormous issue in risk management. And I really want the diligence process to enable you to understand those things. So I'm at your service. I would ask our Chair Reverend Bryant to make his concluding remarks at this time, and we'll turn it back to the mayor.
Well, when can we, if we still have questions?
We're going to pick my...
After Kenny's done?
I think so.
And we will follow up with you at any time.
Well, I want to do it now. I don't have any time. I mean, you got me. I don't want to go anywhere.
Okay, let me, let me go ahead and make my closing remarks because maybe you'll want to comment on some of those that were here for as long as you want us here. Andy? What we've tried to convey in the last hour or so is that the Community Service Board, you know, is a complex system of care, which includes healthcare. And the Board of Directors and the people that serve it on staff are passionate about, you know, I know I'm a man of faith, so I'll say passionate about this ministry because it really is providing a service of care to the most marginalized, the most vulnerable, and sometimes the quietest constituency in the city of Norfolk. And so we care about them deeply. I know that you do too. I want you to know that we are fully supportive as a Board of Directors, also as a staff, to support you in whatever decision you make and to make this as smooth a transition as possible. At the same time, we feel like, especially as a Board of Directors, it's our responsibility to give you a heads up and to make you aware of anything that we think that you might need to know. So I just listed like three things here. Number one, don't move so quickly. Sometimes you can move so quickly, you don't know all the facts. This is a, this is a $25 million organization that is changing at the speed of light because of healthcare reform. It's a big part of what the city of Norfolk does. And so change it at an appropriate way. You've got to decide what that appropriateness is, but make sure that you know all the facts. One of our big concerns are NIMBY issues, you know, not in my backyard. We represent our patients and clients. We represent them as a Board of Directors with no political pressure at all. Can you? Can you do that? The benefit of our current structure, and I'm not advocating for our current structure, I'm just saying one of the benefits of it is the removal of political pressure and making decisions that are in the best interest for our clients. Past experience has proven that NIMBY issues apply pressure to those that are making decisions. And we just want to make sure that our clients are well represented. So please think through about how they can be represented well. Now, I think one of the best things that the city of Norfolk has done in the last several years is to hire Marcus Jones. I'm sure he's going to, he's going to prove to be one of the best things that's happened to the city of Norfolk.
Okay. Annual elections. I've been carrying him for a while.
But so I want to say that because I think that some of the things that I'm about to say could be misconstrued. And I don't want it to be, I just want to make sure that all the issues are on the table, Mr. Jones. It's interesting that on the committee to think through this, to make the presentation as you did to the city of Norfolk Council not too long ago, it didn't include a staff member or anybody on the Board of Directors for the CSB. Now, Maureen Womack was listed as someone that was on that committee, but she was not. She was not at all the meetings. She says she was not on the meetings. She made some presentations. So I don't know if she was or wasn't. But the people that were in the best place, am I wrong on that?
She was at every meeting.
Okay. I'm just going by what, like I said, I could be wrong on that. I'm just going by what I was told. There was a past board chairman that was on that committee, but that was four chairmans ago. So no one from the current structure on the board was a participant. And a lot has changed since that last, four chairmans ago. And Norfolk, there were representatives from other CSB around the state, but Norfolk is different. We have a, we have a different socio-economic environment than a lot of our neighboring cities. We have some unique challenges and opportunities. And the federal government, by the giving of some grants and the primary healthcare, they look at us on the leading edge of community healthcare providers in the nation. And I would challenge you to find out what they're doing right and say, we want to continue, continue that mandate. I've also had several of the people that were on that committee say that the city manager's recommendation, and again, I don't know, Marcus, so maybe you can address this issue. Excuse me, Mr. Jones. Is they said that this was not our recommendation to the city council, that this was the city of Norfolk's recommendation to the city council. So I don't know why that is. I didn't entertain conversation with them. They just wanted me to know that. On a personal note, Mr. Mayor, our Board of Directors has sort of been placed in a lame-duck position. Most of our energy and time, as with any board, is not spent in micromanaging the administration of the organization, but it's seeking how to further its mission into the future, providing leading-edge services that are effective and efficient. And we set the pace, as I said, for communal, for community healthcare systems, not only in the state of Virginia, but in the United States. And two, as a Board, as a Board of Directors, we don't know how to respond to the city's intentions. There have been no phone calls, no memorandum, no conversations or communications about how we as a board are to transition. And there's a very, Andy, you mentioned something a while ago, that we've got to be in conversation with you, particularly as the budget's coming forward. There's a big difference between a policymaking board that's thinking about the future and trying to craft policy and set directions for the future than an advisory board. And we don't know what place we're in right now. So do we plan for the future as a board? Do we make decisions that will impact our organization for the long term? Or should we refrain from making any decisions and just pass on that responsibility to y'all? We're okay either way. We just need some clear direction from you because we don't want to be making decisions that would be inappropriate for us. Finally, one final note. Could you please validate my parking?
A little levity there again.
Yeah.
But let me, Ken, first of all, we, those are all important questions. And we are going to attempt to resolve some of those issues for you in the near future. Actually, we've been moving in this direction. And we've been studying the issue for, I mean, 18 months is too long, maybe a good year. Marcus has been here for a year, February. We've been headed in a direction, he just recently has made recommendations to the council. We heard it was a week, two weeks ago, a complete survey of how other community service boards around the Commonwealth are operated. I actually asked the question about New Haven News and Hampton because a number of these boards are regional boards. And the point that you made about people coming into our system and some of ours going out of, you know, I can understand why a regional, you know, system or a regional organization would make sense. Because we have sort of a unique, if you will, population or diverse population here, we're not well-suited actually to form community service boards with some of our neighbors. And in fact, I think the good work that you have done in the provision of services to folks with substance abuse, substance abuse and mental health issues is maybe one good reason we ought to just stay, you know, within the city. I think the council, the manager's recommendation is to bring this within the city government, which would mean that the board would become advisory in nature. We don't have a chart, we don't have an ordinance that we've scheduled or that we have actually put together, which would outline your responsibilities and duties. As soon as we get to the position that the manager's ready to take this over, we'll be putting together that ordinance. But maybe what we should do, you know, maybe one, a couple of us or all of us can come and sit down with your board and, you know, and have that sort of discussion about what we think of you. Actually, we haven't had the Community Services Board over here in a long time.
Yeah, I know, it would have been 2002.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and been doing God's work with the most work of it. So we have a lot of catching up to do and we'll try to do that. Andy, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. On the, the first one was the ability to get funds after what happened in 2010, the result of the no-show worker. Was there any problem in us getting any grant monies? I understand it looked like you got grant monies that you've told us about, but did we run into a period of time of difficulty?
Actually, we received the Sampson Grant after, you know, the incident.
I figured that out. Were there other times?
And as far as I know, the attempts to RFP and to have pure funds, we've been successful with the Office of Justice, courtesy of the grant that we just put in.
Yeah. Several grants, and they're all very, very anxious to be in this.
So it hasn't been a, an issue of, we haven't been penalized with regard to that at all?
No, the state held us harmless.
The, I noticed that, and this is something that perhaps Bernard, you make, I know this came up once before. You have on-staff psychiatrists, doctors, internists, I saw one, right, that are on-staff. And your current risk management, is that with an insurance carrier? And who's that with?
Yes, I'm Joseph Shorter, Scottsdale and a number of other insurers, Philadelphia Insurance. We carry a number of insurance models.
And what's the, what's the amount of your coverage right now?
$2 million for each incident, $6 million aggregate.
Okay, and...
I'm Joseph Shorter, I'm the HR, Chief Human Resource Officer, I also do facilities, safety, insurance.
Ken, if we're going, and that's what's significant is, is that if we're going to make any kind of move to bring that within, is that it should remain, if we could, I would assume better off that it remain with a carrier. And we need to examine whether we run into a problem, Bernard, with that? Would we run into a problem as a municipal corporation bringing them in?
It's one of the issues we've got to resolve, that it's been our experience that the insurance of the city is usually at a greater expense than an organization of the size of the Community Service Board. So that the city will be the insured. And so there's 4,000 of us.
But can't we, can't we cut that policy out, keep his professional negligence policy?
Yes, and so that, given the fact that the insurance rating company may take into account that people that are not in the profession will not be making prescriptions or engaged in it and keep it at the same rates. So then the analysis will be whether what we're paying for the policy annually is significantly greater than our payout experience. So that for general liability, when we did that analysis, we concluded to go self-insured, but it's something that we've not undertaken. And so I think that at the outset, without that sort of data, I think that we're moving towards keeping the insurances in place to the extent that we can.
Can you just add a little, a small point to that, particularly medical malpractice?
The folks who you, Scottsdale and others are, they have programs specifically tailored for CSBs around the country.
I think so.
And we have a good premium with them because we have a 10-year track record. And that's important when you talk about medical malpractice.
Do you have, is there any kind of E and O policy, anything like that, that you all maintain?
We maintain an E and O policy, directors and officers.
And none of that was applicable back in 2010 when the McGlon affair came out?
That's correct.
That was examined?
Right.
Okay. With regard to, hang on, I've got news. The mental health court and the drug court, I can, the one thing, if you're going to, if you're going to take anything out of this, I will tell you, I deal with those courts all the time. And it, sometimes it becomes very frustrating when you have only, what, 34 for mental health court? Is that what we have, 34 slots or in that box, whatever it is? To have somebody and to be able to try to get them in and we can't get them in. And it's very disruptive on the individual because individuals then looking at hard incarceration versus what could be some serious help. Oftentimes, there are CSB patients anyhow before they even get to that point or have been. And also with regard to mental health court, whether we know that around this table or not, ours has been, through Judge Fulton, the cutting edge, this is the mental health court. And so you all know because you're such a big part of it, this is the mental health court that everyone else talks about. So when they try to make a mental health court somewhere, this is the one that matters because this is the model that they use. So whatever you've done, I can tell you, continue doing it and in fact, do it even more if it's possible. And to try to find as many slots as possible for mental health court because it is a vicious cycle that we run into. So if you have any, if you take anything from this, if you focus anything the next six months, please do so on that and look at both of those because you are the model. And if you can make it bigger, make it bigger because those courts are very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Whibley.
I would share exactly what Mayor Frain is saying. You know, I work with your clients and I know that your services are invaluable. I'm frustrated for you that you cannot provide more services and I would hope that everybody came out of this talk recognizing that there are so many more at need that you and all of us are not able to provide for. In response to your comment, which is an excellent one, about NIMBYs or the politicalization of these services. Like it or not, we deal with the NIMBY situation. of these services, like it or not, we deal with the NIMBY situation. And it's one that I personally struggle with, because I know that all of us have people in our neighborhoods and our families that require and, and take advantages of your services. This is not somebody else's problem, this is all of ours. But like it or not, there is confusion in neighborhoods regarding a plan for CSB, a centralization, a new campus, all of these issues. And I don't know how, I don't do your business, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to tell you how to do it. But I do ask that you make any effort, all efforts that you can, to make sure that the community knows what the plan is. What, what, and why, and how much it costs, and who it's going to serve, and what impact, if any, that serves on our citizens. Because although we'd love to say that we would like to avoid all NIMBY situations, that's not going to happen. And I think communication is key. And I think teaching our citizens what you do and how safe it is for our community goes a long way in clearing up so much of that. So as we go forward, whatever that looks like, you know, whether it's brought in in June or whatever, I hope that we continue that openness, so that our citizens are informed of changes, they're involved in those changes, and we can be proactive ones.
Just to add to that one second, and I think the communication piece we've had, but there's been a lack of trust, for whatever reason, there were statements made about, we're going to go where and do what, and then next thing, somebody finds out, we're going to do, no, we're going to do more and do. So we have to, we have to level with, I mean, we'll never get out of.
It's got to be open.
It's got to be open, and it can't, we've had discussions, and I, Dr. Whibley and I've been there, and everybody sat around, and we talked about what we're going to do and weren't going to do, and then a month later, we were doing what we were told we weren't going to do. So that, you get a level of distrust with the neighborhoods, and then that just throws gas on the fire, and that, I think we need to be really, really aware that, and you're dealing with bright people in the neighborhoods that are part of the community, and they don't, they appreciate what you're doing, but they don't appreciate finding, finding out. And not that anybody did anything devious or whatever, but for whatever reason, there was some move made, a potential move made.
What are you talking about? Because I don't know what you're talking about, and I'm sitting at the table.
We don't need to get into it. Sometimes rumor mill is way ahead of what the decision makers.
But I mean, in a vacuum like that, but, I mean, we're talking in a vacuum again. You've got a few people that know something, the rest of us don't know anything.
Well, I think you were aware, because we talked as a, as a council regarding some of the concerns about the crisis stabilization unit.
Oh, okay.
And, and that initial move into Red Key.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, one other thing. I just, I don't know if John Sarland's office has the capacity right now for auditing reasons, but maybe when the budget comes through, we might want to consider adding a position in to help with the transition of this, and make sure we have a full-time auditor in there just for this work.
One of my hopes, and maybe the manager, later we'll talk about it, is that there'll be some savings in the back office operation of, you know, the Community Services Board. But I mean, by that, I mean the numbers and the, you know, the people who do the accountings and the auditing, and we can certainly, you know, provide the appropriate resources there, too.
Right.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, the, and council and members of the board that are here today, what we'll do is, Winter Bendah has been leading this effort in terms of the transition. And unfortunately, Reverend Bryant, a couple of meetings, you were not here, and some of the questions that you had, you know, Dr. Taylor and Charles and Winter and I went through. In other words, one is very, very important, is that the way that this is, has been presented to you would be an administrative policy board, which, as I shared with Dr. Taylor and with Charles, is that it would still be a policymaking board. So it is literally, really no different today versus July 1st. And that's something that, you know, council can, you know, explore. But what we will do is, over the course of the next, you know, 24 hours, give you just a Q and A, send it to everybody, because there were some things that are raised today that concerned me a bit, that I think we need to clarify those immediately. I do believe we've had an excellent transition up to this point. I believe there's been a great deal of communication, and I'm very pleased at where we are right now.
Yeah, I think I used the word advisory, but that's, that's helpful. Okay. The manager has agreed to validate everyone's parking. Personally, but validate them. This has been a good discussion. We really appreciate you coming over. I mean, the extent of what you do in the community is really remarkable. We've always been proud of that, and the services that you have provided. At some point, we ought to pull out how much the city actually spends on a per capita basis. We used to judge ourselves internally about how much we were spending on per capita, per capita. The auditor of local government accounts keeps that number. And it'd be interesting to see, so we can grade ourselves, as to whether or not we are giving you the appropriate funding, or at least we're doing everything everybody else is doing. So we can get those numbers out as we get into our own budget discussions. All right, and we will keep you well informed, Kelly.
Thanks.
All right? Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right.
That was just number one.
Kerry wants to get out of here?
I'm just teasing. It's a lovely pocket knife, I'm sure.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
This is the end of the review.